Commissioner's meeting to order at 10:01. All those in favor, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, do we have any public here for comment for items not appearing on today's agenda? All right, seeing no additions to the agenda from the board. No? All right, if the meeting minutes are good, we'll take a motion.
I'll move to approve the minutes from the meeting held July 8th.
We have a motion and a second to approve the meeting minutes for the meeting held on July 8th. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion carries. Moving on to proclamations, we've got one this morning. We have Emily and Todd here. Tim, shall we bring them over to the side table here, should you get better angles?
Yeah, they generally look tired.
All right. I know Stephanie will do whatever it takes to make it work, but why don't you come over here to the two side chairs? Steve hasn't bitten anybody in the past couple of months. So we have proclamation number 35 proclaiming July 18th as Parks and Recreation Professionals' Day in Center County. Obviously, Parks and Recreation are real important here in Center County, including part of our billion-dollar-a-year tourism industry now. So let me hand it over to Emily and Todd.
Okay. I'm Emily Schnelba. I'm the Director of Communications at the Pennsylvania Recreation and Parks Society, and we are a statewide professional association that provides industry leadership, professional development, advocacy, and resources to those that work and volunteer in Parks and Recreation. And this is our seventh annual Park and Rec Professionals' Day that was created by our retired CEO, and this is a day celebrated by municipalities and providers all over the country. It's also a day to celebrate Park and Rec Professionals while they are busy providing summer care at camps, keeping families safe at local pools, planning and managing outdoor community celebrations, and ensuring local trails and playgrounds are safe and clean. So if you are out in a park or at your community pool on this day, if you see the park staff, feel free to say thank you to them. You can find all this information on our website at prps.org, and we also have a goodforpa.com website that features over 6,500 local and state parks throughout Pennsylvania, and it now offers over 60 park amenities you can search from, too. And now I will let Todd Roth, our PRPS president, say a few words.
Yeah, I'm Todd Roth. I'm the president of the Board of the State Parks and Rec Society, and I, you know, as a Parks and Rec professional, you know, I just wanted to say whether it's teaching your kids how to swim, you know, hosting children at a day camp, or, you know, youth sports, we do adult sport leagues, or just visiting your local state or national park. As a professional, you know, our goal is to just make our communities a better place to live, and we, you know, we hope we're doing that in Center County. We take pride in what we do, and we're just grateful for the recognition.
Great, well, we thank you so much for coming to the meeting and the groups you represent. I had no idea there were 6,500 parks, both state and regional and local throughout Pennsylvania. And we did just have big doings last week with, let's see, Secretary of Parks and Recreation, no, Parks and Recreation, DCNR, DCNR Secretary Dunn, who is here for the opening of additional trails up beyond Mustard Gap as we work to connect a local park in Mustard Gap with the Whipple Dam and other state parks, I believe including Greenwood Furnace, wasn't it? So, love, love parks. Commissioner Concepcion.
Yeah, thanks for being here so we can recognize what, really what Parks and Recreation brings to our communities, and I think in Center County, we've really been impressed with the amount that, the extent to which outdoor recreation is an important part of our local economy here. I just came from Happy Valley Adventure Bureau's Board Meeting this morning, and that was a topic of conversation there this morning, is the extent to which we're seeing that the outdoor recreation sector is just really booming in terms of what is, you know, bringing people to this region, both, you know, whether to visit or when people come here to visit and see what's available, there's, that's one of, you know, a real draw for people to consider moving here is the extent to which our park system is really like improves quality of life here, so. And for our family, I've, you know, I've got three kids, and we've, you know, really benefited tremendously from Center Region Parks and Recreation and how much they provide, whether it's, you know, like preschool programs at Millbrook Marsh to swim team and opportunities for kids to work and gain job skills. It's just, you know, from, and when you're raising a family over the whole span of those years, you know, there's something for you with Parks and Recreation. And then, you know, even once you're, you're onto your empty nest time, there's all kinds of adult programs to take advantage of, too. So it's really, you know, an important part of life in our region is, is interacting with, whether it's Center Region Parks and Recs or the state forest system, really an important part of what makes this a great place to live. So thanks for all the effort that's put into this. And I know building these programs, Todd, are, you know, it's like, it takes you all year, you're thinking about how do you build these summer programs to keep kids in our region, you know, really busy and learning over the summer. So thank you for all that work.
Thank you, Commissioner Concepcion. Commissioner Dershowitz.
I think it's pretty clear that people use parks in this area, not only just local municipal ones, but also the state parks. Whether you're grilling hot dogs, or you're going swimming, or you're, you know, four-wheeling somewhere, I mean, just the, this band is almost unimaginable how much, how much there is to do out there. And I'm reminded, you know, whether it's fishing, or hunting, or whether it's, whether it's just going out and enjoying the day in the, you know, in the woods, or just to get away from it.
Oh, Steve, turn your mic on.
It's, it's always been good, and I really appreciate the fact that, you know, that there's so many folks that have made it their career and their passion to make sure that that, that those opportunities are available. And really, just, it's, it's something we take for granted, and I think the average person doesn't think, hey, all these things just occur, and, you know, and they don't realize the, the amount of planning and effort that it requires to keep these things going. And it's, it's just phenomenal, and we really appreciate the opportunity that it provides our citizens and for each of us, I think here we all enjoy, whether it's, whether it's hiking, or biking, or, or again, just having a cookout under, you know, under the, under the, in the shade, it's just, it's always nice to know that those facilities are out there, and you folks are doing your job to, to keep them, to keep them going, and we really appreciate it, so thank you.
Thank you.
I believe you're headquartered here in State College, aren't you?
Yes, we are.
We appreciate that, too. I know you're kind of tucked on, is it Sandy Drive or something like that?
Okay.
But, yep, thanks for locating the, almost the exact geographic center of the state. I, I think it's fitting that the exact geographic center of Pennsylvania is called Fisherman's Paradise.
Should we ask them what their favorite park in Center County is?
Yeah, let's do that. Put them on the spot. We asked the questions now.
It's against your favorite child, right?
It's hard, hard to pick. I mean, I'm, I'm an aquatics guy, so my favorite park is, is actually a pool, but if I had to pick a non-aquatic venue, probably the new trail system at Mustard Gap is my favorite.
There you go.
I've always enjoyed Tudak Park.
All right.
One of my favorites.
There you go.
Lot of things to do at Tudak, and it's right in town, too. Yeah, in fact, I think Commissioner lives nearby.
Mm-hmm, yeah, it's walking distance from us, so.
Good stuff. Well, thank you.
Wonderful, thanks. Any questions from the press relating to the proclamation on Parks and Rec? No? All right, unless there's anything else, we'll take a motion.
I'll move to adopt proclamation 35 of 2025 proclaiming July 18th, 2025, as Parks and Recreation Professionals' Day in Center County.
I will second it.
We have a motion and a second to adopt proclamation 35 proclaiming July 18th as Park and Recreation Professionals' Day in Center County. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion carries. Great, thank you so much, Emily and Todd.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming. Moving on now to bids and...
Did you want to do a follow-up?
Oh, sorry! I'm rushing so fast to get Jonathan up here, we need to present the proclamation.
We've got a brand camera on there, right?
Oh, you got a...
Yes. Awesome.
Hopefully, the weather will break a little when we get out.
Why don't you set her on Fisherman's Paradise, stay on the map.
This is good stuff.
Is this good, JJ?
Oh, yeah. I think you all look great, too.
All right. All right, everyone's smile, three, two, one. All right. That's...
Thank you.
There you go.
Thanks for coming in. We need to have...
We'll see you out there somewhere.
All right.
All right. I was so eager to get Jonathan up here for the Center County Sheriff's Office renovation information for bid, and I believe we do have several bidders.
Yes, good morning, Commissioners. After review, I am recommending that you consider and approve a contract with GM McCrosen for the general construction of the sheriff's office renovations in the amount of $191,000. Also, GM McCrosen for the electrical construction at the sheriff's office in the amount of $212,240, and the approval of a contract with Allied Mechanical and Electrical for the mechanical and plumbing contract for the renovation project in the amount of $175,000.
Great, thanks, Jonathan, and thanks for all the hard work on getting this across the finish line. I know the sheriff's building has kind of been the neglected child of all of our buildings, and good to see that we're doing some major upgrades there to make the space more comfortable for the sheriff and his deputies.
Yes, it's in need of some renovations and long overdue, so they will be much appreciated at that facility.
Great, Commissioner Concepcion.
Yeah, just glad we're at this point to move forward with this project, so.
Yes.
Thanks.
Commissioner Dershowitz.
What were the other bids for the construction?
For general construction, the one bid was from TMG Builders from Belfont. That came in at $176,000. However, they were unable to meet the responsible contractor ordinance, and then the other two bids were higher than the GM McCrosen, one at $192,000 and one at $212,000.
So we're considering giving a, releasing this contract to a bidder who, although they connect to the RCO ordinance, is still $29,000 lower, a company that we've done business with twice before on the, on the envelope for the courthouse and the courthouse annex.
Unfortunately, due to the requirements of the ordinance, they are unable to meet those, so.
That doesn't make a lot of sense to me. I would ask that we waive this RCO requirement for this project. The responsible contract ordinance, the spirit of it, I, I understand, but ultimately, this is $29,000. And $29,000, it's, it's real money, it's taxpayer dollars that we have a relationship with TMG, and it doesn't, it's counterintuitive to me how this makes any sense. I can't support providing, providing a contract to the next highest bidder, and somebody help me here with what I don't understand, because I don't think I understand why we're doing this.
Well, Steve, we've, we've gone over that in great detail over the prior couple of years. I know you've been against the responsible contractor ordinance since the beginning, but we received four bids, we're going with the second lowest of the four bids, and the responsible contractor ordinance is discussed in excruciating detail is to...
I think we need to discuss it again.
All right. Responsible contractor ordinance is used by a broad variety of groups throughout the United States, including a number of counties in Pennsylvania. Significant research into the topic has shown that responsible contractor ordinances do not raise the overall cost of construction for counties. There's also a major advantage that you have mentioned in that we are not required to go with the lowest bidder every time if we have a responsible contractor ordinance. Otherwise, we are required to go with the lowest bidder, and I know there are many, many county commissioners in Pennsylvania who loathe bid openings because they know there's a chance, a pretty noticeable chance, that the low bidder is somebody they don't like dealing with, and that low bidder will then eat them alive on change orders. Very, very common, it's happened here in Center County, too. So the responsible contractor ordinance is constitutional, it's used by other counties, we've had relatively positive success with it here in Center County, and off the top of my head, those are the ones I can come up with, I don't know if there are any others, Commissioner Concepcion, like that.
Well, I think that, you know, one of the main reasons that we pursued the ordinance was the training requirements and ensuring that the quality of work on county projects, especially when we're looking at projects over a certain amount of, of money, that are significant projects, that we have evidence of the training for the worker. So that was, that was the intent, and I think it's been discussed.
And I appreciate where you're coming from, to some extent. What I don't, what I don't understand and probably appreciate is the fact that we've used TMG before, they've done a successful job on a number of projects. It's $29,000 less, and quite frankly, I, I just don't get what, what's going on here. It's $29,000, this is, it's real money.
Right.
And if, I, I struggle with, with the notion that we're selecting a contractor that right now we have under a penalty phase of another project because they're late on it.
Right.
And so I, I'm just struggling with, with what's going on here, and I can, I can get into what my personal thoughts are, but I'm going to try to, try to avoid that, but this ultimately is just, it makes no sense. It's $29,000 that could be saved, and, Mark, to your point where you're saying that counties have saved money, I, I don't see how you can spend $30,000, almost $30,000 more and save money, so I...
Steve, I don't think you want me to bring up the Temple Court Building project, which predated my time on the board. That project was nearly a million dollars over budget on change orders. Sometimes it's penny wise, pound foolish. Now, TMG's a pretty good, pretty good supplier, we've had fairly good luck with them, but there's a lot of other occasions, especially in other counties, where the low bidder is not a good, not a good contractor. I think everyone at home knows, there's excellent contractors, there's good contractors, and there's not-so-good contractors. And if you, as a homeowner, decide that you don't want to do business with a not-so-good contractor, perfectly within your rights, but without an RCO, as a government entity, you have to go with a low bidder. Man, as Commissioner Concepcion mentioned, with the RCO, there are requirements that pretty much everybody on the job has had at least some training in the particular work they're doing, so, that's, we've kind of been over this a lot of times, Steve.
I think we're trying to incentivize, too, the contractors who want to compete for government projects in Center County to, to pursue that training for their employees, so.
I, I think we're probably aware of the struggles that State College Borough is, is experiencing right now with trying to get people to even bid on projects because of their, what I would consider restrictive contractor ordinance, because it's telling you that you've got to do this, you've got to do that, and a lot of folks just don't want to compete. And my, my struggle here continues to be is, we have a limited number of qualifying contractors in our region, and at the same time, I think the number of folks that are even willing to, to navigate all the, all the waters that, that the RCO requires is just, I, I think it's an experiment that we tried, and, and quite frankly, I, I just, everything that I thought about it has come true, and I just can't appreciate why we are spending $29,000 on a project that obviously could be done, I think, for less money, so.
All right.
But that's about all I have to say, if, you know, if you're heart set on, on spending $29,000 extra dollars, I guess I'm going to have to ride that one out.
Well, we were almost a million dollars over budget on the Temple Court Building, Steve. There's a lot of other county projects throughout this Commonwealth that are substantially over the initial bid, because, again, there are excellent contractors, good contractors, not-so-good contractors. As municipalities, you're stuck without an RCO, taking the low bid, there's almost no way around it. With an RCO, we can pick and choose, so.
And I think we did fine with the Community Services Building, the, you know, the bids came in, you know, really favorably to, to what we were estimating, so.
Slightly under budget, budget, actually.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion to approve items one, two, and three for the Center County Sheriff's Office renovations.
And I will second the motion. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nay?
Nay.
Motion carries. All right, moving on to contracts and authorizations, Jonathan has another capital project for us.
Yes, I am also asking for your consideration and approval of a contract with OPEX to relocate two pieces of equipment from the Elections Office from this building to the Community Services Building. This contract is in an amount of $773. The reason being is it will void, void the warranty of the equipment if our staff was to relocate it on our own.
Great, thanks for explaining that, Jonathan, and want to keep those warranties up, and $773 is not completely unreasonable for moving a couple of pieces of crap. All right. Any questions, Commissioner Concepcion?
Sounds okay.
Commissioner Dershowitz? All right, we'll take a motion.
I'll move to approve the contract with OPEX.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve the contract with OPEX. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay, motion carries. Great, thanks, Jonathan.
Thank you.
All right, now we have, for planning and community development, discussion of possible projects for the 2025 Community Development Block Grant Selection. Leslie.
Morning.
Morning.
Yes, there's actually, I have a couple CDBG-related items on the agenda for your consideration this morning. The first is to review the projects that were received for the 2025 fiscal year application that's due in October. There were a couple of projects that came back, they were submitted last year, but were not funded, and the first one being Haynes Woodward Municipal Authority, the Mountain Avenue Waterline Replacement Project, that was funded with CDBG in 2023 in the amount of $215,700. That project needed two years of funding, and so they are requesting $79,418. Again, this is replacement of approximately 700 linear feet of water main along Mountain Avenue in the Village of Woodward. It'll be replacement and reconnection of water lines, and installation of a fire hydrant along the service line, and the municipal authority will be paying engineering costs out of local funds, so CDBG would just be going, you know, for construction only. A 2022 survey did determine that the households in that service area, which I believe are around 15 households, had a percentage of, an LMI percentage of 81.48%, so definitely fundable and eligible project, and I would recommend funding it for that, that second year so they can be fully funded and move forward with this project. The next for consideration, Haynes-Aaronsburg Municipal Authority, last year they submitted a request for the Plum Street Water Main, this will be replacement of a... This will be replacement of water mains and valves along West Plum Street. Now, since I submitted the summary that I think you have in front of you, there was a slight change. Last year, we had looked at a specific service area of households along one side of West Plum Street as well as West Aaron Square. I think that was about 17 or 18 households. Because the project was not funded last year, they did submit an application for small water sewer for those households. So this year, they're actually requesting that we, that CDBG fund another part of the service area, which is 13 households along West Plum Street and Rachel's Way. We would need to do a, a new survey of this particular, of those households, just to determine, you know, that there's at least 51% LMI there. And I don't have an updated opinion of cost at this time, but estimating, you know, based on what they requested last year for 17 households, I estimated that it would be approximately $325,252 for 13 households. And then the two projects that were newly submitted this year from Milesburg Borough, they're looking to reconstruct two streets, Limestone Street, Creek Street. They are, they are hoping to use internal labor, Public Works Department, to, to do this, to do the reconstruction. So they would be able to save on labor costs. There'd be no prevailing state or federal. So we, you know, the, the money that they're requesting would go directly to the, the reconstruction. They also would not need to, they feel that they can manage the project themselves without an, a professional engineering services, so we would, they would be saving money there. So the, the amount that they're requesting for Limestone Street is 38,000. Creek Street is approximately 20,000, so total of $58,000 in CDBG for these two small projects.
Any questions?
Leslie, before we go into detail on that, I know that all three commissioners are very concerned about the Eagle Creek Development.
Yes.
And our application for a competitive CDBG grant. Have we heard any news or update on that?
Unfortunately, we have no updates at this time. I know, you know, I did submit on county's behalf the application in February. There was some initial back and forth with DCED. They needed some clarification on a couple items. We submitted everything they requested, provided clarification on a number of things, and that was toward the end of May. And we haven't had any updates since. We've heard relative, pretty much nothing. But I do know that one of the senior grant managers who is reviewing, or part of the team that's reviewing applications, was on leave for a number of weeks. So that may have set, set us back a little bit in terms of final review and timing of award. I do believe we heard last year around early to mid-June. So it is a little late.
It's a little late.
Yeah. But hoping good, no news is good news. I do, I do feel that it was a good sign that they were asking for clarification and having conversation early on and seemed to satisfy, you know, those, those requests at that time, so.
And as a member, it was over 30 homes there. And I believe their total project was something, maybe it's just a tiny bit over a million?
1.4 million.
1.4, okay. The number's growing a little bit.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Would there be a possibility that we could potentially utilize some or all of this year's CDBG money to help backstop that program as well?
It's a really good question, and one that I had thought about as well. There are a couple reasons why that probably doesn't make the most sense. And the first reason is even if you allocated your, your, you know, some entitlement money for 2025 toward this project, it wouldn't fully fund Eagle Creek. And so it's not, and anytime that you, you know, spend even $1, commit $1 to a project, regulations say that, you know, the project needs to be fully funded before you can begin construction. So it wouldn't help them move forward any faster. And then because of that, if, if you're looking at, you know, putting multiple years of funding into this project, and then we're still waiting to be fully funded with other resources, we run up against a timeliness issue, just like we did before with the '21 and '22 money. You know, there are grant expenditure deadlines, and we don't want to be in that situation again, where we're committing this funding to this one project that desperately needs it. It's worthwhile, it's, it's desperately needed, but, you know, it's waiting for, you know, larger resources. And so I appreciate the, the question. I think it was a good one and something to definitely think about and consider, but in the long term, I don't think that's the best use of 2025 money.
All right, well, I'll, then I'll reserve the rest of my comments and pass it over to Commissioner Concepcion.
Yeah, I, you know, it looks like we have a few reasonable projects here to consider. You know, the overall cost of the Plum Street Water Main is, you know, that kind of comes in over what our total allocation is anyway, so.
Yes, I mean, that one would require two years of, of CDBG funding.
That was actually what my question was. If, let's presume that we only give them a fraction of, I mean, our, our total was 282,000. They're asking a loan for 432. Would they have the wherewithal to complete that project with, without a second year of allocation, or?
They would not. No, they would need a second.
So that's completely dependent on, on Community Development Block Grant Funds.
I, professional engineering services is being paid by HAMA, but construction would, would need to come from CDBG.
But that's always a concern, because there may be a, a project that comes up next year that.
Right.
That rises to the top, that, that maybe absorbs those funds.
And we don't know yet if that, this new service area of 13 homes would, would be eligible. We're, we're right in the middle of a survey, so we, we should have that complete early next week.
So for 13 homes? Okay.
Any other questions? Again, this was just review this week. I'll be back on the 29th for you to, to make final selection.
I do have a few more questions.
Sure.
One is, we have down 282,226 net after admin.
Yes.
Is this money already in the hands of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania? Or is this potentially money that President Trump can rescind? He has already put forward in his 2026 budget to zero out Community Development Block Grants entirely.
So it's a good question. We are, we have not heard anything or been told to do anything differently. So we are proceeding with business as usual. But, I mean, I think that, just given the state of the situation we're in, I think anything's possible.
Yeah.
And, yeah, it's a little uncertain at this time.
Because the, at least in Pennsylvania, a lot of Community Development Block Grant money is utilized for water and sewer authorities in rural areas throughout the Commonwealth.
Yes.
I don't remember the exact year. I think it was in 2017, President Trump tried to zero out Community Development Block Grant Funds.
He did.
And the contact from constituents on that issue was so overwhelming, including, I believe, GT Thompson was helping push, along with Senator Casey, push that CDBG should continue to be funded, and lo and behold, it was.
Yes.
So those of you in rural parts of Center County who enjoy clean water and the ability to flush a toilet, not have to have somebody come along every couple of years to clean out your sewer system, might want to contact your federal representatives to ensure that the Community Development Block Grant Program continues to receive funding in federal fiscal year '26, which I believe starts October 1st.
It does.
It's right around the corner.
Yes, and I can tell you that members of the admin team at CEDOCAG spent some time in DC not too long ago, having conversations and advocating for continued, you know, funding of this, of the Community Development Block Grant. And we have a lot of local support, so I think it's in a positive place, but still uncertain.
Yeah, now, I know both of our U.S. senators have turned over since that date, but I know at least in 2017, GT Thompson was very supportive of continued funding for Community Development Block Grant Funds. So I'm noticing with the Haynes Woodward Municipal Authority, they're only asking us for a portion of that project. They're covering the rest of it somehow?
So this project was funded with CDBG in 2023.
All right.
$215,700. And then the opinion of probable cost was updated and came in a little bit higher than the original. And so the total project was bumped to 295,118, and so there was a deficit there, and that's why they're asking for that second year of funding.
All right, so maybe we're a bit, we were a bit short with the CDBG funds in '23, and now we're even a little bit more short.
Yes.
Okay. So basically then, we are, the Community Development Block Grant funding was paying for the overwhelming majority of that project as well.
Yes.
Okay, all right. And I noticed first, number three and four in Milesburg, Milesburg's a little closer to the cutoff with an estimate of only 56% of their residents at low to moderate income.
Right, and they have, that's borough-wide LMI, 56%. With street reconstruction, it's a little tricky. We, we do have to look at the service area, the beneficiaries of, of a project. And so I'm not familiar with the location of those streets and who benefits from traveling on them, and so we really would need to take a closer look at, at that. You know, some of the larger streets that are more of a thoroughfare, that, you know, is a connector or something, has a larger service area, obviously with these, it may just be benefiting the folks that live on those streets or within the general, you know, more general localized vicinity. And so it's possible that DCED would come back and make us do a census survey of those residents. But at this time, I'm, I'm going with the borough-wide percentage of 56%.
Because that is, the Community Development Block Grant can only go to lower-income communities.
Correct.
And we have a lot of communities in Center County that are right on the line. And you could have a couple of senior citizens on limited incomes maybe move out. You could have some people with more middle-class incomes move in, and then boom, it's not an LMI neighborhood anymore.
That's right.
One other question, Mark, Leslie, Amber, if we, if I could entertain, is this the best place to find this money? We have liquid fuels, we have other, other road sources.
That's a good point, Steve.
That was actually something I was going to suggest, was that because they, they can do this for a smaller amount, you know, in-house, so to speak, or with forced account labor.
Sure.
I was going to recommend that they, that they seek or use their liquid fuels or some other, maybe this isn't the best fit because it is a smaller project, isn't the best fit for CDBG.
But we have, we have other.
Yeah, that is a really good point.
We have other resources to, to look at for.
Yes.
I believe it would even be eligible for the $5 fee money as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. Can you, you have, since it's all in the same department, Ray, could you have your staff take a look at those two Milesburg projects and see if there's any chance that they might fit under liquid fuels and $5 fee?
Yep.
Okay.
That process starts in August.
And the.
Okay.
That.
All right, okay.
Yeah, let's look at, you know, the location and, and make sure that it all fits. But, you know, it may, it may well be that part of this does come, or maybe we can use a combination. You know, traditionally, we've used the, the Community Development Block Grant Funds to do water and sewer infrastructure upgrades, so.
Yeah.
I don't like to stray very far from that.
Right.
But if it's a compelling argument, I'd listen to it, sure.
Yeah, I think the community building in Spring Mills at the old elementary school was a very compelling one.
Yeah.
Without the Community Development Block Grant Funds, that building probably would have started leaking even worse than, than there would have been mold and, than a community, a building that's literally loved to death, I think every square inch of that space is leased and has been for years.
How much money do we have in our funds for road, road service?
I believe you'll see that report coming up here soon, but I believe the local use is around a little over $800,000 that's unused at this point.
Oh, okay.
Liquid fuels a little bit lower.
Yeah.
We'll get it on allocation in December, but it's probably going to run around 100,000 for liquid fuels.
Probably do have resources if we choose to.
All right, so, yeah, if you could have planning, reach out to Milesburg Borough and just make certain that they're going to turn in a liquid fuels application, because that's essentially state money, might have a little fewer restrictions and paperwork on that.
Actually, it's a quicker turnaround, too.
I'm sure it is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, whereas there's not so many other funding sources for rural water and sewer authorities. Especially that doesn't come with a whole lot of regulations and rules. All right, so you're coming back in, is it a week, two weeks?
Two weeks, on the 29th. So we'll have some more information at that point in terms of surveys and liquid fuels and help you make a final decision then.
Okay. Great, thanks. Any other questions from the board on this one? Okay, we've discussed that very thoroughly. You have a second item, though?
I do. So I'm asking commissioners to consider approval, approval of subrecipients or on behalf of agreements between county and Belfont Borough. This is specific to the Tallyrand Park Suspension Bridge Removal of Architectural Barriers Project, required three years of CDBG funding. We are required to have an agreement on, on file for each of the years funded. So that's why there are three for federal fiscal years, 2022, 2023, and 2024. The environmental review was fully cleared for this project. We are in preliminary design with the engineer. The Borough is considering some alternate options. And then once final design is in place, they can go to Historical Architectural Review Board for final approval and then get out to construction bid. So that is moving forward, just need your approval on the agreements, and sorry, there are three of them, but.
Yeah, that's all right.
Yes. Any questions?
Yeah, that's an amazing bridge. It's a great feature at Tallyrand Park, and Steve could potentially correct me, but I think that started out as an Eagle Scout project.
The one suspension bridge, actually, we helped fund through a DCNR grant years and years ago. And I think, is this the main one that goes across? I think that was a Belfont Borough project.
Okay, all right.
But I don't know, I can't.
I believe that's also a second life for that bridge, isn't it?
I think the other one was a second life.
Second life, all right.
But that's, it's such a, such a great improvement, that facility down there.
Yeah, so this project would make that bridge, because currently it is inaccessible to folks with disabilities, mobility issues, so.
It's also starting to fall apart, too.
A little bit, yeah. Yeah.
It needs some work. All right, great. I think we could take a motion, then.
Then I'll move to approve the fiscal year '22, '23, and '24 agreements with Belfont Borough for the Tallyrand Park Suspension Bridge Removal of Architectural Barriers Project.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the federal fiscal year '23, '24, and '20, sorry, '22, '23, and '24 agreements with Belfont Borough for the Tallyrand Park Suspension Bridge RAB project. All those in favor, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Great, thanks, Leslie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on, Richard has an item for the Belfont MDJ office.
I'll.
Oh, John will cover it?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, I'll cover it. And if there's any technical details on the financing, Richard can help with that. So as you know, we will be moving multiple agencies out of the Willow Bank Building once this new CSB building is complete. That means there's going to be a lot of vacant space that's available in this building, which gives us some opportunities to move other county agencies or offices out of rented space and into a county-owned facility. One of those is the Belfont MDJ office. Their lease is coming to an end soon, and so what this is, is a, a stopgap or a bridge to extend the lease for 18 months, so that, that would give us some time to identify an appropriate space potentially in the Willow Bank Building and then have it retrofitted with anything that's needed to have it prepared for the courts to move back into the Willow Bank Building where they once were. So before you, for consideration, is an addendum to that lease with Center County Mutual Fire Insurance Company, the owner of the existing lease space. I don't know, Richard, if you had anything to add to that?
Leslie, any questions? Well, we'd like to thank the Center County Mutual Fire Insurance Company for being flexible on this particular lease. Any questions from other commissioner on this one?
No, but just to note that, you know, being able to move back into this building eventually would be a good savings, you know, over the long term. But really appreciative of the, of the ability to, to have this shorter-term lease to get us through to that point.
And I'd like to actually, again, thank not only, not only our landlord up there, but the Magisterial District Judge. but the Magisterial District Judge Gillette Walker, who I think last, was just last week, came down and took a
Took a tour, yeah.
took a quick tour of, of the facility and had some great ideas and looking for some opportunities to make this happen. And having the cooperation of the courts pretty key in
Yes.
this discussion, so.
Yep.
So, sounds good.
Great.
And I will move to approve the addendum with the Center County Mutual Fire Insurance Company.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the addendum with the Center County Mutual Fire Insurance Company. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. All right, thanks, John. Moving on to Human Services, Quentin from Aging has an item for us.
Okay. I have something for your consideration. I have an addendum to our collective block grant agreement with the Pennsylvania Department of Aging. That's our primary funding that we get through the state. And they are requesting to extend our agreement by three months, a total of four hundred and one thousand, four hundred and thirty dollars. And that would run from July first to September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-five. Essentially, they're continuing to work on our next agreement, and they're not ready yet. So they've asked us to extend the agreement we have now.
So in actuality, it sounds like it's almost positive.
Yeah, so they're, they're, they're going to be changing the language with the next agreement, and essentially, they, they want us to continue with this agreement until they're ready. It's just more of formality, I think, while they work on getting one in place for us to sign.
Do have to ask the question, since there isn't a state budget per se right now. Is this all connected with that, or is this a separate conversation?
This is a separate conversation according to the state. It is just aligned with their ability to get the con, the next contract out to us. And they are changing some of the language in it, which is taking some time.
But the actual amount, they're, they're telling you the amount in lieu of a, a codified state budget at this point?
Um, yes.
I wonder how that works.
Yes, yes.
They're confident that they will have X amount?
Yeah, yes. So that they're ensuring us that we will have our funding for the next three months.
Good.
Okay.
All right. Overall, sounds good.
All right. I'll move to approve the contract addendum with the Pennsylvania Department of Aging.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the contract addendum with the Pennsylvania Department of Aging. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Great, thank you, Quentin. All right. And then Leia has four items for children in youth.
Good morning.
Morning.
I am here this morning to ask for your consideration for the approval of a CEWEL agreement for one of our staff to participate in a graduate school program. So CEWEL is the Child Welfare Education for Leadership Program that is provided by the state through the University of Pittsburgh. What happens with CEWEL is that staff are able to apply to obtain their master's degree in social work. The CEWEL program will provide the funding for them to obtain their master's degree for however long it takes them to obtain that degree. But the requirement is that they stay in the field of child welfare for however long it took them to complete their degree. They then need to kind of pay that back to the county. In our particular situation, we have a staff member who is requesting to participate in CEWEL, but they will be doing it part-time after hours. So there are no county funds associated with the agreement. It's simply us acknowledging that she is participating in the CEWEL program, that she will then be committed to the agency for however long it takes her to complete her degree, and that I will periodically, they will check in with me to ensure that she's still employed and also is still in good standing with us as she completes the program. But it's a great program for folks that are willing to take on the time. There are some counties that have staff that are able to do it full-time, and then the county can seek reimbursement for salary and benefits and things along those lines. But that's not the situation that we're in with our particular staff at this moment. But it's a great way to encourage folks to come into child welfare and to stay in child welfare by continuing their education.
Great.
And then the other three items that I have for you this morning are our contract renewals. So the first is with the, the Diversified Treatment Alternative Center, so DTA, to provide foster care residential services for dependent and delinquent youth. That particular contract total is for a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, with the state funding being a hundred and forty-four thousand, and the county share at thirty-six thousand for a period of July one to June thirtieth. The second renewal is with the Community Specialist Corporation to provide foster care services for dependent and delinquent youth. That particular contact, contract total is for a hundred and fifty thousand, fifteen thousand dollars, with the state funding at ninety-two thousand and the county share at twenty-three thousand. And then the final is for Family Care for Children and Youth Incorporated. Do they provide foster care services for dependent and delinquent youth? That contract total is for sixty-five thousand dollars, with the state share at fifty-two thousand dollars and the county share of thirteen thousand dollars. And each of those are for a period of July one, twenty-twenty-five, to June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-six.
Great, thanks, Leia. Any questions, Commissioner Concepcion?
Sounds good.
Commissioner Dershowitz.
What's, just out of curiosity, this, this, back to that education component, what, what's the general time rate? How, how long does it take to complete a master's degree?
Yeah, so if you're, yeah, absolutely. So if you are going for full-time, it's typically eighteen months to two, two and a half years if you're going full-time. And then part-time can make that extend a little bit, depending on how many credits they take each semester and whether or not they take summer classes. So in, in this particular program, we're looking at probably about three years for her to complete it in, at part-time.
Okay. I was just curious. It's pretty fast, actually, considering they're, they're working full-time.
Yeah, yeah. So that will also, you know, play a part as far as how long it, how much time it takes her in terms of caseload. CEWEL is a great program. We don't have a lot of folks that take advantage of it, so hoping that will start to occur a little bit more. They offer an undergraduate program, too, so Child Welfare Education for Baccalaurates. So when folks are in, going on for their education and they're looking to obtain a social work degree, if they're with an accredited university, they can apply to be a CEWEB student, which will then give you funding for the remainder of your, typically your senior year of college, as long as you agree to complete a, a little bit of a longer internship and then stay in child welfare for a minimum of two years. So I was a CEWEB graduate many years ago, and it's a great program as well.
What happens if, let's say you get halfway through it and you're just overwhelmed and
Yep.
your workload prohibits you from finishing? What, what's that? I'm, I'm just curious.
Yeah, absolutely. So then you're responsible to pay back the University of Pittsburgh for any funding that they contributed to your degree. So in this case, if, if she's going part-time, depending on how many credits she has done, with the University of Pittsburgh would have paid for those credits, she will need to reimburse the University of Pittsburgh for, for those credits. She'll need to pay that back. And then the same would happen if you were a CEWEB graduate.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're very welcome.
Looks like we can take a motion.
I'll move to add CYS items one through four to next week's consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to add the four items for children and youth services to next week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. Great, thanks, Leia.
Thank you.
Very small consent agenda this week.
Move to approve this week's consent agenda.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this week's consent agenda. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. And John, we have a CNET request.
Yes, before you for consideration is the approval of a CNET sponsorship broadcasting of the Center County Historical Society's 2025 John H. Ziegler Historic Preservation Awards Ceremony, which will be held on Sunday, January eighteenth, twenty-twenty-six at three P.M. at the Pennsylvania Match Factory here in Belfont.
Great. Well, always, always a nice event. I, I attend most of them. Any questions from either commissioner on that one?
Good point. I'll move to approve the CNET request for the Center County Historical Society.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the CNET request for the Center County Historical Society. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. All right, thanks, John. Moving on, we've got a check run from Commissioner Concepcion.
Yeah, the check that I'd like to recognize on the check run today is Center, to the Center for Community Resources, and they provide mental health services as a crucial partner to Center County's Department for Mental Health. And one of the, the services they provide is twenty-four-hour crisis intervention. So that's a really crucial service. With that, I would move that we approve the check run that is dated July eleventh.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve the check run dated July eleventh. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries. John, do you have an administration report this week?
Nothing to report this week, however. I will have the quarter to report at the Tuesday, July twenty-second meeting.
Okay, all right. And then moving on to reports and announcements, looks like we have a voter administration report.
We do. The total number of voters on the report this week is one hundred and one thousand, five hundred and ninety-five. That's down twenty-three from last week's report. Of those, forty-one thousand, two hundred and forty-one are Democratic voters, one hundred sixty Green Party, five hundred and fifty-seven Libertarian, fifteen thousand, five hundred and ninety-seven with no affiliation, and forty-two thousand, twenty-nine Republican. All of the others are, that, on the rolls comprised two thousand and eleven voters of the minor parties. Moving to our precinct of the week, we're recognizing Precinct Nine. This is Milheim Borough. There are five hundred and thirty-one registered voters in Milheim Borough. They had a total voter turnout of twenty-two percent at the May primary. Milheim Borough votes at Milheim Fire Hall at one oh five North Street in Milheim, and we'd like to thank the Fire Hall for the use of that facility. That's the voter report.
Great. I was just, out in Milheim on Thursday, there's a nice new addition out behind the Fire Hall. They're putting together a building that's going to have a roof and, say, half-walls around it so that they can hold very large outdoor gatherings.
Great.
Any executive sessions to report or hold, John?
None to hold, however, there is one to report. On July tenth, the board met to discuss a personnel matter from one fifty-eight P.M. to two oh eight P.M.
Great, thanks, John. Our public meeting schedule, next week, Tuesday, we have the Board of Commissioners meeting at ten, and the Employee Benefits Trust at one. And then on Thursday, we have the Combined Salary Board and Board of Commissioners meeting at ten. I'll take questions from the press. No questions from the press today. All right. And we'll take a motion to adjourn, and by the time we get it done, it'll be ten fifty-seven.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion to adjourn and a second at ten fifty-seven. All those in favor do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose nay. Motion carries.